Congratulations to the class of 2018 Dublin in Lawrence County. Don't forget to visit us at Randolph Jewelry Repair Plus for all your jewelry needs. And remember, all jewelry repair and sizing is done in-house. Shop Randolph Jewelry sale now and get tremendous discounts. Save 50% off all diamond jewelry. Come see our new selection of boulevard watches. We also have graduate charms and silver dollars for the 2018 graduates. And there's a whole lot more, so come see us at Randolph Jewelry Repair Plus. Open Monday through Saturday, 9 through 6.
Welcome to the debate for Lawrence County School Board. We have with us here tonight, our incumbent Ms. Kathy Swett and Mr. Doug Bridges. At this time, each candidate will be given two minutes for an introductory statement. We will start with the incumbent Ms. Kathy Swett.
Hello, my name is Kathy Swett, and I bring you good tidings from the Lawrence County school system. The Lawrence County school system is in good shape. We have the best staff, the best administrators, and the best teachers and students that we've had in years. It's been a cooperative effort through all of the administrators. We are a team. It's not an I-system. My roots run very, very deep in Lawrence County. We have six, five generations that have grown up in the Bruton community of Lawrence County. I tell somebody my roots run so deep that you'd have to dynamite me out. My love is for children and for the schools. I've been a children's advocate all of my life. The children that have graduated through the Lawrence County schools will always be our children. All of my siblings were products of the Lawrence County schools. Our only son graduated from East Lawrence, and my husband and I both retired from the Lawrence County school system. We're church members, active church members at Bolin Springs United Methodist Church. We're former foster parents with the Lawrence County DFAX. I try to attend everything I can for the schools. Last week, I was at a tennis match for a few minutes, and then I went to the playoff. By the way, our girls at East Lawrence High School are playing right now on the second round of state, and we're very excited about that. I've attended plays, musical concerts, I'm a member of the Falcon 100 Club, and I will fight you about the children and the staff at our schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Swett. At this time, Mr. Bridges will also be given two minutes. Mr. Bridges, you have two minutes.
First off, thank you to TB35 and O'Conne Fall Line Technical College for hosting this event. We appreciate their gratitude for hosting us tonight, and for all of you for being here. Thank you for being here. My name is Doug Bridges, and I'm pastor of Faith Christian Assembly out on Snell Bridge Road. I have taught school as a paraprofessional for the Special Education Department. I was a school bus driver for close to nine years, and I appreciate all our school has done and for what is being done in our school. A lot of good things are going on in our school, so I appreciate that. But the reason that I'm running, I want to kind of set the narrative here for myself, some people seem to think that the only reason that I'm running is because I'm mad with somebody or somebody's done something wrong, and that's not the case. I'm not running because our school system or the board moved an administrator or hired somebody I didn't like. That's already been done. That's in the past. We've got to move on forward from that. Why I am running is because of some of the children that are sitting in this auditorium tonight, that I watched grow up in our school system. I helped coach them when they were wrestling, little boys that, we had some that about four, five years old, that would go out wrestling, and they would take turns. And one day, I was like, "Why don't you let him beat you? Why are you doing that?" And he looked at me, and he said, "Well, it was his turn to win." These kind of children is what makes my life valuable and why I'm up here tonight to stand up for them. I want to run for people like Haley, a little girl that got on my school bus one day. She was probably five years old. And she got up on the school bus, she said, I looked around, they usually give us some papers, and I said, "Where's your paperwork, darling? Where are you going home to? How do I know how to get you home?" I said, "Do you know where you live?" She said, "Yes, sir. I'm going to my grandma's." And I said, "Well, where does grandma live?" She said, "In Georgia." And that kind of just touched my heart. So I just want to set the record straight on why I'm running. It's not about what's been done in the past. I disagree with some of those things, but let's move forward and make our school system a better school system. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Thank you, Ms. Swett. We appreciate that. At this time, we're going to get into our questions that have been submitted by our viewers, and Mr. Bridges, we are going to begin with you. What experience do you have with complicated and complex budgets?
What experience do I have with complicated budgets? I don't have a lot of complicated budgets. My budget's pretty low. I do run a church. Our budget is not a massive budget, but we do have some budgets, and I learned this as a small community church in Lawrence County. We've learned one thing: to live within that budget. No matter if it's a $100,000 a year budget, or if it's like Lawrence County, a $66 million budget. A budget's just that. No matter how big or how small, we've got to live within that. So as far as experience, that's the experience that I would have, 24 years of pastoring a small community church.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Swett, same question.
Well, we have had some serious issues with our budget. We've had to make some very serious decisions. We have to wait until the state decides what they're going to do. A lot of our money comes from the state. We have to wait till the General Assembly meets and decide what they're going to give That is the whole idea of where we get our money. But we've made some tough decisions this year. We've added some positions back. We are real happy to have Art back at East Lawrence High School. We're doing a restructuring to try to save money. We're trying to use the taxpayers' money in a very frugal way, because I'm a taxpayer. I'm a property owner. We have, in the last three years, rolled back the millage twice. It started, it was over 16% when I came on the board, and we're now at 14.66. We have an annual budget of $66 million, and we try to keep within, I think, the CPA's ideal fund balance. And right now, we have a little over $8 million in our fund balance. We have had three clean audits in the last three years, and I'm pretty sure that means there was not one single discrepancy.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. We're going to stick with you for the next question, and it's kind of getting into safety and those kinds of types of issues. And we want to know, do you think the schools should conduct any type of routine mental health screenings for students?
That's a toughie, and especially with everything that's gone on recently in other counties and states. I don't think that the school routinely should check every child for mental health. I think that's a parent concern. Certainly, if a teacher or a counselor notices certain characteristics that leads them to believe that a child might be having issues, then it's our responsibility as an educator, and especially a certified educator. You're mandated to seek help for that child. But that's something that the parents, the school counselor, and certified mental health people should deal with.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. Mr. Bridges?
I would kind of concur with Ms. Swett on that. I don't believe that the school should mandate or put no child under that kind of scrutiny to go under some kind of mental health evaluation. They shouldn't have to do that. So if there is a need there, when I was serving in the school district and working there, we had to, if something was going on that wasn't right, we would have to report that to the proper authorities. But that's a dicey situation, when you get to talking about putting somebody's child in a situation where you're going to be the one that's going to determine whether they're mentally healthy or not. That's some area that I don't think we, as a school system, should enter into.
Thank you very much. Staying with you, Mr. Bridges, kind of keeping on with the safety of our schools, do you feel that our schools are safe? How would you describe a safe school zone, and what does that look like to you?
That's going to be harder to fully describe within the two-minute barrier that we have here tonight, but do I feel like our schools are safe? I feel like our schools are safe, as safe as they can be at this moment. Driving the school bus for nine years, I was reminded of this the other day when we got to talking about the issues that's prevailing right now, and a lot of the questions that's coming up as I knock on doors and parents open doors, and some of the questions I'm getting about this subject is, what do I think about arming our school teachers? What we need to do is ask our teachers what they think about it, not so much just us. But I think our schools are safe, and I felt safe when I drove the school bus, but I know there's issues now that we haven't, never had to deal with before, and that's a tough situation. If you ask 10 people, I bet you eight out of the 10 would probably say, you know, "I'm not for this or this proposal of arming teachers," but that's something that the board's voted on, and at certain areas, if we've exhausted every means necessary to secure our schools, make sure we have a resource officer in every schoolhouse, and that's the last resort that we're going to get to is to arm a teacher, then that might be something we should consider, and I would go along with that at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Swett?
Already, we have resource officers on every campus. That does not mean there's one in every school. We have one resource officer for the three schools on the east side. We have cameras or installing cameras in the halls, which won't help with anybody coming in, but it would help with problems going on in the school. The armed gun thing has been discussed at prior board meetings, and we are not allowed to make a new policy until it's been discussed, laid on the table 30 days, and then voted on. It was in the newspaper that we had this policy. It's on our website, and we had, I did not have a single person call me and complain about it. This is going to be very, very structured. We will not even know who the person is that's chosen. They will go through an intensive background check, a psycho evaluation, and training through the sheriff's department, just like our law enforcement officers do. And having two grandchildren in the school, we have the largest county, I think, third from the largest in the state, and suppose all of our deputies might be down at Cedar Grove helping with a massive wreck, and we get the call that we have an active shooter. I, as a grandmother, am glad that we would have someone in the school that would be qualified to take down a shooter. If we save one child's life, just one, then this policy is worthwhile.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. At this time, we're going to take a quick commercial break, and we'll be right back.
Hi, I'm Dwayne Edge, candidate for Lawrence County Commissioner, District 5. I would like to take time to see if y'all understand this, as I can't understand it. We operation hours is Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Sunday, 1 to 6, and close on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Well, what happens if I'm working on those days, and I just happen to be off, and I come by here, and the recycle center's closed? We need these recycle centers open daily. You can get tags throughout the week, you can pay taxes throughout the weeks, you can buy permits, and they take your money throughout the weeks, but we can't provide you a service throughout the week? We have got to change District 5.
Hi, I'm Chuck Harwell, Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County. Stop by and see us today for a car loan, a boat loan, vacation loan, any type of consumer loan you may need. You can get your answer today, not two days, three days from now, by local lenders involved in the community. Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County, serving Dublin for over 12 years.
Thanks, and welcome back to our debate for District 1 County School Board. We will continue with our questions with Mrs. Swett, and our question for you, Ms. Swett, is, do you favor consolidation of Dublin City Schools and Lawrence County Schools? And give us a reason for your answer.
No, I do not. I'm very proud of the county schools, and I'm sure Dublin's very proud of theirs. This has been the tradition in this county for many, many years. Now, Dublin has a charter system, and we are not. There, we are obligated by law to educate every child in Lawrence County. If Dublin decides to give up their charter, then we will be mandated to take them into our system, and we will do that, and they will be offered the same quality education that we are giving our children. But if I had to vote on that, I think it would be a system entirely too large, and I would vote no for consolidation.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. Mr. Bridges?
I also am a no on that category. It seems like every few years, we get this issue about coming up consolidating our two schools, Dublin and the county schools. I oppose that. I wouldn't recommend that. I don't like that. I'm very much also on the traditional line of keeping our schools along the traditions. I want the East Lawrence schools to be East Lawrence Falcons. I want West Lawrence to be West Lawrence Raiders, and be proud of who they are, whatever side of the river they're on. And I understand the legal aspects of it. If Dublin City Schools has to give up their role as educating, that the county would be mandated by law to take them in, and we would do that, and have to work through that. However, if I am elected, I sure hope it don't happen on my watch.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Sticking with you, Mr. Bridges, our next question is, what do you believe your district members' greatest concerns are?
From knocking on the doors that I've knocked on over the last few weeks and several days, the biggest concern I'm hearing is the school safety issue is a big topic, and also, there's still some concerns of the bullying issues that has been going on in the last little while. So that's some of the two major topics I hear right now.
Sticking with you, Mr. Bridges, when you did mention bullying, how do you believe would be the best way to go about correcting that?
Well, we can't go back old school, can we? So let's just keep it in the modern-day terms where we are right now. Bullying has to be dealt with first on the lines, I believe, from what the teacher says. They understand that, see that, hear something, say something, do something. First, get involved in that. If a student is not free enough or safe enough, feels secure enough with that teacher to come and talk to them or about the situation, they're going to hide it. They're going to sweep it under the rug. I hate to keep putting this up, but I see this in driving the school bus. The same thing goes there. I wanted a relationship with my kids, that when something happened behind me that I may not see every day completely, that that child could come to me and sit down and say, "Hey, you know, this is going on." First, I'd move them, separate them, do what I had to do, but if that didn't work, I'd refer it to the next person up the chain. That's what we have to do with bullying, is stop it at the source. Get the teachers involved, then move to the administrators or principals. If that don't solve it, move on up to the superintendent, which is here tonight, thank you for coming, and move on up to the board. Do what it takes to stop this. This is an issue that we can't just sweep under the rug and act like it don't exist because it still does, and many children are suffering from this even right now. So we've got to deal with this issue immediately and decisively.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Swett, what do you believe is your district's greatest concerns?
Well, I think that we're on the right path, and if you all have read the papers in February, Dr. Brigham brought a bullying policy to the board, and it was adopted, and it's in every school, K through 12, and it's called Rachel's Challenge. It was named after one of the children that was killed in Columbine. It's included in the curriculum on every grade level, and this is being taught. But I disagree with bullying starting in the classroom. I think bullying starts at home. I think we have children that are bullied at home, or either they have parents that are bullies. And I've seen this since the election started. And parents need to talk with your children about this. You don't want your child bullied. What would you do if you found that your child was the bully? Would you take corrective action, or would you sweep it under the rug and blame it on somebody else? This is a social issue, and schools can't be blamed for all of this. We get blamed for a lot of things now that our teachers can't control, and they do watch, they do care. And contrary to what people think, I'll say this again, we have the best administrators and the best staff that we have ever had collectively in the Lawrence County school system, and I'm proud of every one of them, and I would fight for every one of them.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. I'm sticking with you. Finish the statement with one sentence. As a school board member for my district, I will blank.
Always put the children first.
And how will you do that?
By making sure their needs are met, no matter what the money needs to go to the children, not to salaries, not to facilities. If we have a choice between a reading program and giving a coach a supplement, reading program.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. Mr. Bridges, same question. As a school board member for my district, I will?
I will, without apology, be an advocate for the children, the teachers, and all our staff of Lawrence County School Board.
And how would you do that?
By standing up for them and letting their voices be heard. I am honored that Ms. Swett made the comment that she did of, we have the best administrators and the best school system, best teachers. I agree with that. We have the best anywhere. But also, just having the best don't mean that there's not problems that some of them address and raise with our administrators, and some even on the board of our education that are not getting heard. And as a representative for them and an advocate for them, I'll make sure their voices and their concerns are heard and will do so as swiftly as possible.
Thank you. Staying with you, Mr. Bridges, what are the factors on which you will base your decisions as a school board member?
On the facts. That's it.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Swett?
What kind of decision? Are you talking about discipline or budget curriculum? I'm not real sure what you're asking.
So as a member, you always have to, I mean, you always have to look at, I mean, everything from an open standpoint. I get that. But what do you think helps you make decisions as a school board member?
I think being fair, prayer, talking to school personnel, getting their opinion about things, talking to retired teachers that have experience in the classroom that I might not have, parents, say, "What do you see that we need? What are your wants and concerns?" You know, usually, the only time we hear from some parents is when they're complaining or trying to cast stones at the school. It'd be nice to have parents come and say, "I had an idea. Have you thought about doing this? And Dr. Brigham has started councils, he's got student councils, and he told us about some young children that came one day. I don't know how young, but I think elementary children that come and meet with him, and they offer suggestions about how they think the school would be better." And I think that's a wonderful idea, because who than children know better about what our needs are?
Thank you, Ms. Swett. Kind of sticking on that, how can we keep the public informed on the interactions of the school system and get that dialogue going?
Well, we have open board meetings. Our minutes and all of our policies are posted online. They can come to the board meetings. If they want to ask a question, they can call in advance and ask to be put on the agenda. Unless we're having children honored, which we have had some wonderful honors. We've had children that have won school, district, state, and are going to national in math and writing, and we are extremely excited. But that's the only time we have parents come, is when their children are being honored. And you know, we talk about people, they say, "Well, you didn't let me know." Well, you know, I can't call for 1,000 people. You have access to everything we do, and if you're that concerned, you need to start coming, or reading the paper, or going on the website.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. Mr. Bridges?
Repeat that question again, sir.
So how can we keep the public informed on the interactions of the school systems and get that dialogue going between the concerned parents and the school board?
That is a big deal right there. Many of you know that I've knocked on your door, and I've asked you to vote for me, and you told me this. I don't know if I can vote for you or not. Why don't you know that? I've asked you, "Who is your school board member?" I don't know who my school board member is. That's in East Dublin. That's around our town, our community, District 1. Half of the people that I'm knocking on their doors don't even recognize who their board members are, and that's something we've got to change. Whether I'm elected, or Ms. Swett's elected, whoever y'all decide to put in as your next board member, this needs to change. Folks, we've got to do better than this. As a community, as community leaders, as pastors, and worship people in our communities, we need to stay involved with our school system and our community. It's not just picking up a newspaper. Some people, I don't get the newspaper. I barely get internet where we live out in the county, but you know what? It is up to us to know that. And I also believe it's up to us as board members to get out into our communities and knock on doors, even after we get elected. Let them know, "Hey, I'm here for you. What's your concerns? What's going on?" Get out there and let them know that. Don't just, you know, take it for granted, "Well, we got elected, and then four years later, we'll come back and knock on your door again." Let's get out there and try to make a difference in our communities, let people know what's going on. This is something that has to be dealt with and hopefully improved, and I hope, I hope, if I'm elected, to knock on every door in District Number 1 and introduce myself to you. If I hadn't already done that, I hope I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. We're going to take one more commercial break right here, and we'll be right back with you.
I'm voting for Kevin Tanner as my county commissioner in District 5. I have lived in Lawrence County most of my life, and I know Kevin Tanner will be an honest and hard-working commissioner. Kevin and his family have worked and lived here, and all went to school at my alma mater, East Lawrence High School. For a common sense commissioner that will work hard for you, join me and let's elect Kevin Tanner, Lawrence County Commissioner, District 5.
Midstate Pools and Spas announces their Get Ready to Swim Sale, now in progress through May 5th at Midstate Pools and Spas. Midstate Pools and Spas is your trusted pool dealer. Over 3,500 pools installed. We build all our own pools, never subcontracting the workout. Count on Midstate Pools and Spas for weekly maintenance, liner replacements with a full 20-year warranty, and for pool renovations. While in the store, check out the great selection of telescope casual furniture, marquee spas, the ultimate in hot tub experience, and our great selection of Louisiana grills. And get ready to swim with 10% off all pool chemicals, so save now through May 5th during the Get Ready to Swim Sale. Discount good on cash and credit card sales only. Midstate Pools and Spas, 2273 Veterans Boulevard in Dublin.
Thank you, and welcome back. Mr. Bridges, we're going to begin back with you. Describe your view of the roles of the school board and the superintendent, and what is the ideal relationship between these two offices?
The relationship between the school board and the superintendent must be one that works hand in glove. There was a time, and most of you may remember this, some of you may not, that in Lawrence County, where they had the school superintendents were elected officials, they no longer are, so our board hires our superintendents and offers them the contract. So it's imperative for that board to search out the best, brightest that they can hope for, put them in. Then it's up to you as voters of District Number 1 in Lawrence County, if that superintendent is not living up to the standards that you hope for him to live by or her to live by, it's up to you then to hold the board members accountable that put them in that position. The school board member is not to micromanage the school. They're not an administrator. They're not a principal. They're a board member, and the superintendent makes choices. He makes recommendations. He makes recommendations for hiring. He makes recommendations for firing, moving, whatever, and the school board takes that considerations and works in conjunction with our superintendent. We have a good superintendent, as far as I know. I don't know him very personally, just made him a few days ago. From everything I've heard, he's a great guy and doing a super job. Certainly, Ms. Swett thinks so, and that's great. But we have had some in the past that you know, it's kind of been some issues. So let's work together with them. That's the board member's job, from my standpoint, is to help that meant the superintendent to do his job, to be an asset for the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Swett, what do you believe the role of the school board and the superintendent is, and how should that relationship interact?
The role of the school board is very specified in a code of ethics that we are given. We go to We go to several workshops yearly. We have one in December and one in June. And they cover ethics, they cover legal issues. And as a school board, we can only have authority when we're in the school board meeting acting as a body. We can set policy, we can work on the budget, and we can hire the superintendent and vote yes or no on the superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Brigham has started something new that I think's wonderful. In the past, there may be a bus wreck and the first time we'd hear about it would be a parent calling our house and said, what's going on? I saw one of the buses had wrecked. And we would know nothing about it. Since he came on board November the 1st, if there's any problem, he sends us an email. And on Friday afternoons, we get an update that includes everything involving curriculum. If we've had a literary event that our schools have won, he sends us a list of that. We have a list of every accomplishment or everything that's going on in all eight of our schools every Friday afternoon. And I can't tell you how wonderful it is because most of it's positive. And you know, I think our children nowadays hear too much negative and it makes you be a negative person. And I love that most of the things going on with our schools are positive.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. I'm sticking with you. Describe the achievement gap in the district. What causes it and what can be done?
I might step on some toes here. Sometimes it's as simple as changing an administrator. Our children don't lose their intelligence going from the primary to the elementary to the middle school to the high school. The good Lord doesn't give out brain power by zip code. I've never believed that. Our scores, ICCRPI scores, have increased in the last three years from a system average of 73% to 80.5%. And the teachers, the people that are aware of what these mean, know that that's a huge gap. We have 16 disciplines that are tested statewide that are mandated. 11 of those disciplines, our children scored above state average. And my thing is, state average isn't the best. It's just a norm. It's just a line. But we're doing better than that. And that's happened in three years. I think we can reach for the stars and that's what I'm expecting from our children. We had one math class at East Lawrence Middle School. Their scores increased 80% in one year. And one of the people responsible for that is sitting in this audience because she taught those children before they got to eighth grade. We have very, very dedicated teachers. And it just, if you want to see this woman, this redheaded woman get mad, just put something about our schools not being good. It's people that don't know what they're talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. Mr. Bridges?
I believe the question was just to...
Describe the achievement gap and what causes it and what can be done.
Yeah, the gap, so let's deal with that for a moment just if we can to understand what the question is, is how, if there's a gap from this point to this point, as Ms. Swett pointed out, it's not from elementary school to middle school, to high school. There's no loss in the student's mind. So how does that gap exist? That's the big question and we must discover that. Must really look at ways that we can figure this out. I think sometimes it's just the morale problems that we have. Sometimes it's the expectations that we have. Sometimes kids just, you know, they may have a day when they don't really want to be there. They may have a day when things just start going their way. So let's look at that and try to determine if we can improve the situation of our children by improving the morale, raising the expectations, and stabilizing our learning environment. Over the last few years, we've got a great system. I'm not going down East Lawrence, Lawrence County, East West Lawrence. I'm not going to do that. I'm not here to do that. We've got a great school system. Everybody knows that. I'm not going down no teachers, no administrators. Everybody knows we've got good ones. But let's not stick our head in sand like stuff don't exist that we can't improve on. Let's just look at the situation that's going on and say, look, there's some, there's some issues. It's not downing nobody to discuss them and say, look, here's the problem, here's the thing that's going on that's troubling some people, and go forward with that. Teach them morale, know why there's great teachers and some of them may be the happiest in the world. If that's the case, that's great. But why so many of our teachers leaving? Why so many of our teachers moving to Johnson County? Why so many of our administrators moving to different counties? That's the thing we've got to think about. Let's improve that. Let's keep our teachers. Let's keep our good teachers. Let's bring them back. Let's bring those that, maybe they retired early for whatever reason, whatever issue they may have. Let's see if we can't get them back home and increase that gap.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. I'm sticking with you. Do you believe topics such as homosexuality and alternative lifestyles should be discussed in the classroom?
No. There's a place for it. I'm afraid we're on a slippery slope on that one. Lawrence County, think about it. Let that question right there sink real deep into your mind. We going to start teaching alternative lifestyles to our children? What's about, I got sex education programs. How far are we going to go with this? We going to start promoting it? We going, once we get into this arena, there may not be no backing out of it. Have to be very careful getting into this. It's like the gun debate. We're in it now, folks. Whether y'all like it or not, we're there. It's a sad day for our school to be there, but we're there. We can't go back and undo what's been done. Moving forward, we got to trust the implementation. We got to trust our teachers. We got to trust our administrators to do what's right, and I believe they will. When this thing's implemented, working with the sheriff's department and all these things that's got to come to place, we got to put all this together. We can't go back. When we begin to teach these kinds of things and put them into our curriculum, is it going to be voluntary for that program or is parents going to be mandated to put their children in here? These are the kind of issues that I think would have, let the parent do that teaching at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Swett?
This is not in our curriculum. We have discussed this at the legal issues workshops that we have been in for the last two years with Phil Hartley, who is kind of the guru of school law in the state of Georgia. Thank goodness we haven't had to deal with it. This is another issue like the mental health. I think if a child comes to a teacher and is concerned and upset, then I think the teacher's responsibility is to send the child to our school counselors and let them call the parents. I think this is something that the parents need to deal with on an individual basis. This is another job that the schools do not need to take the lead.
I agree with that.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. At this time, we are going to take a quick commercial break and when we come back, we're going to give both candidates two more minutes for a closing statement. Thank you.
Congratulations on a job well done graduates from Bill Bailey and the professional installers at Bailey's Custom Flooring. Now Bailey's Custom Flooring believes in doing things right and recognizing well-deserved success. Warmest congratulations on your graduation, class of 2018, from everyone at Bailey's Custom Flooring, a proven contractor of commercial and residential coverings. For sales and installation, call 290-6084.
Companion Care.
The independence of those you love. It's important. Companion Care Senior Services helps those important to you maintain independence longer.
Caring for those you love.
Personal, professional care, all from the comfort of home. With care plans available from 4 to 24 hours a day, we can meet your needs. Find out how.
Local loving in-home care for your loved ones. Call us today.
Thank y'all so much for being here with us tonight. At this time, we will be giving each candidate two minutes for a closing statement. We will begin with Mr. Bridges. Mr. Bridges, you have two minutes.
Thank you. And once again, thank you to all that showed up here tonight for all the candidates that's here. We've got some other interesting races going on in Lawrence County, so get out, learn them. Get involved, community. Appreciate you being here and interested in our school board tonight. I thought maybe that the school board may just kind of slide in, kind of unnoticed and not really, you know, be a big deal. But with some current issues happening, it seems like that's changed as I knock on doors around our community. However, it's my desire to be a voice for this community that's been so good to me over these past years. I've lived about half my life, not as long as Ms. Swett, but I've lived half of my life here in this community. I have no political ambition other than to serve the students and faculty and staff of Lawrence County. If elected, I will look at every situation without favoritism or political view. I'll always stand with you, listen to your concerns, and work to see they are dealt with in a timely manner. As I said before, I will without apology be an advocate for the children and the teachers and the parents of our school system. It's a great honor for me to stand here before you tonight. It's a humble experience to me to ask somebody to vote for me. As a minister, I've been doing this a long time and I'm not a politician. It's hard for me to get out here and ask somebody to vote. I can't even hardly ask nobody to put a sign out. But I do ask you tonight to elect me as your next representative of school board District Number One. I will stand for you and always do what's right. Thank you and may God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Swett, you now have two minutes.
All right. I would appreciate your vote and support. I feel like I've been open with everyone. Anyone that has a problem, my phone's in the phone book. I care. I don't think there's anybody that has any more invested in the Lawrence County school system than I do. I'm very, very proud of the progress that's been made. And one thing I forgot to mention that's the most important is literacy. We are putting a very, very strong emphasis on literacy. It's very saddening to know that prison population and prison buildings are determined by the third grade reading scores. Folks, what does that tell you? That a third grade child that's not getting their reading will probably, probably end up in prison. Now I don't know about you, but that breaks my heart. And Dr. Brigham has made that one of his goals for us to really, really push that area. The school board and the superintendent jobs are the most important in the state, in the county. Now I know we need protection from the sheriff, but you think about who educates? Your nurses, your doctors, your firemen, your plumbers, your first responders. Do you want somebody working on you that doesn't have an education? I want the very best educated children that we can get in Lawrence County. And I think it's our job to make sure that when our children leave the Lawrence County school system, that they will be able to go out in life and be a productive individual. And that's one of my goals as a board member. Please vote for Kathy Swett on May the 22nd.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. And that will conclude our debate for Lawrence County School Board for District One. I'd like to thank both of our candidates here tonight, Ms. Kathy Swett and Mr. Doug Bridges for being here with us and we'll be right back.